I now call the order, the April sixteenth, twenty twenty four, special meeting of Wellington Board of Trustees. Time being six thirty P M. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mister Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Daly.
Present.
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Teets.
Here.
Trustee Wiegand. Mayor Shosse.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you.
Okay, first item is gonna be, um, are there any comments from the trustees with expiring terms? Trustee Gator.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to do this as my last meeting. And I first want to start off by just saying it's been a pleasure and an honor of mine to serve the residents of the town of Wellington. Um, when I moved back to Colorado, back in twenty eighteen, following the passing of my father, we moved to Wellington because I liked that it was still a small town. There were still were farms around and it reminded me of what Fort Collins was like when I was growing up. And so that was part of the reason we moved back here. Shortly after we moved back here, I started coming to board meetings and started having questions of why are we doing this or why are we doing this this way? And one of the things my father always told me is don't complain about the problems, be part of the solution. So rather than expecting other elected officials to do a better job communicating or ask better questions, I decided I would run for the board. And the citizens said, we'd like you to represent us. I've done the best I could for the last four years to really hold to that, and it's been an honor to serve the residents. I wanted to share my appreciation, starting first and foremost with my parents, who raised me with the ethics and the morals that I have, and really desire to step up and to do more. I want to thank my wife and my children for the sacrifice. It's been probably hundreds, if not thousands of hours over the last four years that have been invested in meetings and packet review and talking with residents and really serving the community. And so I appreciate my family standing by me through all of that. Um, I want to thank all of my siblings who have given me wisdom and advice over the years and thoughts. I appreciate that. I also appreciate, um, just the support I've had from my pastor and my church who prayed for me, have wisdom to serve the residents of this town well. Um, I also want to just thank the town staff. It's been great to work together with you guys, and I appreciate a lot of the things that we've done over the years. It's a time I sworn in, we got to deal with a pandemic, we got to deal with crazy water issues, the biggest improvement projects this town has ever seen, and the loans that go with those and trying to figure out how to pay them. And it's been challenging to go through that, but it's been great to see some of the good things that have come out of that, the citizen roundtables that we've established, the quarterly town halls where we've tried to engage the residents more, and the finance committee that's helping us to kind of look through things. And it's been great to work with staff together on some of those things to bring those to pass. Um, it's been challenging at times. I know we all have different opinions and feelings on different things, and my, I appreciate the times that we've worked together. I think one of the relationships I'm the most excited about that had happened in Wellington was I had met with some members of the Hispanic community who were not excited about some of the things that I believed in, but we sat down, we had a conversation, we found the areas we could agree, and that was what led to us having a transportation pilot program and making a lot of changes and really trying to represent their voice to the Board of Wellington. And that was really an honor for me because it was finding, we don't agree on something, but what is something that we can agree and work together on and being able to serve in that capacity? And my hope is that as this new board comes in, you guys have a different vision, but my hope is that you guys will continue to find ways to work together, make sure we work together as a town. People have commented on the division, but a lot of that can start here as a board, as a decision on our side to say, hey, we can disagree. We don't have to all think the same, but we can, I think someone said to me, disagree better, right? It's okay to disagree, but let's do that without making it personal, attacking things. So, and then one of the things I just wanted to set straight, there've been a lot of people who said, oh, you know, Trustee Gator is all upset about this, or he wants to keep power. I almost didn't run again this last term because I was tired and exhausted, but there were a lot of residents who said, we want you to represent us, please run again. So I said, I'll run and I'll let the people make their decision. I very strongly believe the people made their decision. They want to see the town go in a different direction than the vision that I have for the town, and I'm happy with that because I'm excited to get a lot of my time back. And it gives you guys the opportunity coming in as trustees to kind of work towards some of the things that you have said is important. And so, um, my challenge to all of the new board working together is, you know, just remember, your job here as trustees is to represent the residents. What's where their elected representatives, where their voice in this decision, and I hope you guys can do that job well. So, thank you.
Are you John? Um, so we did put together a certificate of appreciation for you. Um, and I would like to thank you for hours of dedication, um, being a highly contributing member of the board. And you weren't late to meetings, um, you didn't miss meetings. You, when you were engaged, you were engaged, and it's, it did not go unnoticed, and it was always appreciated. Um, so I wanted to present this with you for serving from twenty twenty to twenty twenty four. Um. Okay, um, having completed their terms, the outgoing trustees are hereby dismissed. Thank you, John. Okay, uh, candidates elect, uh, Cannon and Moyer, please move forward to the dais. Assistant Judge, uh, Sarah Stebien will now issue the oath of office for the incoming trustees. Um, I would like, if you would like to sit there, please, and then Lowry here.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Steben, I'm the Assistant Municipal Judge for the Town of Wellington. Are all, all the trustees elect are standing, I'd ask that you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I am Valerie Moyer.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Solemnly swear, affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the laws of the State of Colorado.
And the laws of the State of Colorado.
And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The duties of the Office of Trustee.
The duties of the Office of Trustee.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Okay, you may be seated, and ask that you sign the oath before you.
Thank you, Judge Stebien. Uh, welcome, new trustees. Okay. Are there any comments from the newly seated trustees? Trustee, sure, go for it, trusty Lowry.
Thank you, trustee Cannon. Um, I did prepare a little something. Trust, that's okay. Um, Wellington residents, I am here before you today with a heart brimming with hope and gratitude as I embrace the privilege of serving you as your new trustee. I am deeply humbled by your trust and confidence in me, and I am committed to serving you with the utmost dedication and integrity. In the tapestry of democracy lies the resilience of our community. Together, we possess what is needed to conquer any obstacle and forge a path to a brighter tomorrow. My vision is one of unity, progress, and inclusivity. I am hopeful that by working together, we can find common ground, bridge divides, and ignite positive change. I am excited to collaborate with the mayor, fellow trustees, community leaders, staff, and citizens like you to address the issues close to our hearts. Your voices will be heard, and your concerns will be addressed. Together, we will strive to make our community a better place where every individual can thrive. I promise to be a beacon of transparency and accountability in my role. I will listen to your concerns and advocate for your needs and work tirelessly to make our community a better place. Together, let us write a new chapter of progress, hope, and unity. Thank you for entrusting me with this responsibility. Together, let us build a better future radiant with hope and boundless opportunity for all.
Trustee Daly.
Uh, first and foremost, I wanted to thank the voters of Wellington for showing up and contributing and making sure that your voice is heard uh, and participating in the process. This is, you know, the single most important part of, of how this government works is making sure that you're voting and being heard. So thank you so much to the voters. Uh, other people I want to thank are, I had tremendous support in my campaign, um, of, of residents, of businesses, of, of volunteers, and I wanted to say thank you to them. Uh, it was not just a, hey, we support you, it was action. And that means a lot to me, and it was incredibly compelling to see that people were willing to do so much uh, and spend so much time, uh, to support me. It, it gives me that confidence too, that the last four years are something, well, in general, I am extremely proud of the last four years in serving on this board. We have tackled and solved significant issues, and we have risen above and gotten Wellington to a point where we can now plan for the future and, and make Wellington what we need it to be to serve our community better and have a better quality of life. So I am so extremely proud, uh, of the last four years and the work that's been done both under Mayor Shosse and, and Hammond. Um, and I'm, and I'm so happy to have participated. Through those last four years, the, the knowledge that I have gained, the relationships, the network, network and, um, opportunities that I have had have really set me up for success to continue on the next four years and lend everything I've learned, uh, back to the town. So I appreciate the Town of Wellington trusting in, um, my track record and wanting me to pursue more. Uh, it means so much to me. The nice thing about campaign cycle too is it reinvigorates you. You get an opportunity to reinvent yourself, you get an opportunity to, to embrace and, and learn exactly what the community wants. And I think that's important to refresh that. So I can honestly state that I am riled up, I am ready to roll, and we're gonna do some, some real work in these next four years now that we have the opportunity to really start moving forward. Um, so I'm really excited, really just to start pursuing the vision for the future for Wellington. So thank you so much. It was a pleasure serving with John, uh, and he was always a wonderful advocate and incredibly reliable and consistent, um, and always challenged me. And I really respect that, and I think that was very valuable that I had the opportunity to serve with John. So thank you to, to John as well, and for the opportunity that he was willing to and wanting to, uh, continue serving this community. So I just wanted to make sure I acknowledged that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Charleston. I agree that, uh, with Rebecca, and I want to thank John Gator for his four years of service to this community. John's been a friend of mine for a number of years, uh, I have a lot of respect for him. Um, I have a lot of respect for anyone who takes up this mantle and takes on the responsibility of representing the people of the community to make that community a better place. And that's the reason why I ran for this office. I'm excited about the next four years, I'm excited to work with this Board of Trustees. I'm excited to work with staff, I'm excited to represent the community, and I hope to get to know all of you. Thank you very much.
Okay, so now is going to be the action item. Um, we're gonna be considering the appointment of the Mayor Pro Tem. Um, for this process, we're gonna hear and accept nominations for the appointment. We'll discuss the nominations, and finally, we will vote on the nominations. Uh, for a nomination to pass, it must receive a majority vote from the sitting trustees. Now, I'm gonna have Mister Sapienza lay out some different options of which we could move forward with the vote.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, Dan Sapienza, the Town Attorney. Um, in all issues before the town, uh, before the town board, it needs to be an open vote. That's one of the cornerstones of government. There's an exception in Colorado statutes allowing for a secret ballot vote when the board elects its own leadership. It is optional, it's not required, but it's, it's, it is an exception, and because that's the exception is laid out in the statutes, it's certainly one wanted, uh, to present to you. Um, the way a vote would work, um, as the mayor pointed out, you'd be nominations. A nomination wouldn't need to be seconded, but it would need to be accepted by the person being nominated. Move on to a vote, and if it were a roll call vote, not a secret ballot vote, um, Mister Moose, the clerk, would call each of you in turn, and you would vote out loud for your choice of the nominees. We do a secret ballot vote, um, we'd pass out little pieces of paper, I'm not sure how it would work with one trustee being remote, but we could maybe figure that out if that's the direction you wanted to go. It, it is just such a, a, an exception. Um, there is no other issue under state law that this board can make a secret ballot vote. So I want to make, get that option in front of you. So, what would you like to do?
I think at this time we can, I'll just call, trustee Cannon, how would you like to vote on this matter?
I'm not in favor of secret votes. I've just, it's just something that, that just kind of rubs me the wrong way, so I would rather have an open vote and hear people's voice.
Thank you. Trustee Daly.
Open is fine for me.
Trustee Mason.
I'm fine with an open vote.
I agree, open is fine.
Trustee Teets.
Sorry, um, I'm fine with an open one as well.
Perfect. Okay, so we will proceed, um, with a public vote. Uh, the appointment of the position will be made by public vote. Um, do I hear any nominations from the board for this appointment?
I would like to nominate Ed Cannon, trustee Cannon.
Trustee Cannon, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Okay. Um. So then I hereby accept the nomination for trustee Ed Cannon for appointment of Mayor Pro Tem. Are there any other nominations from the board?
Mayor, I have a nomination of Dave Wiegand, but he is not available via video at this time, so I don't know how you verify that. Is he allowed to call into the trustee meeting? I apologize.
He would need to be present in the, in, in the room to accept a nomination, or I mean, present in some way to accept a nomination. Um, I don't know, we have a, do we have a call-in option? I mean, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, that's fair, let's try it all.
Trustee Teets, let him know that I'll be giving him a call right now.
Okay, sounds good, thank you, sorry, I know he just, he can't get his video up, but I, I know he can make a call.
Hi Paula, how are you? I'm sorry about that.
It's all right, we've got you on speaker, um, in the trustee meeting, and, and trustee Teets has nominated you as a, um, for Mayor Pro Tem, and you would need, do you accept that nomination?
I would.
Yes, he accepts the nomination.
Okay. Sorry, we're in the middle of cleaning fish, I'm sorry about that.
No worries, just hang on in there.
Okay.
You get to step away from cleaning fish for just a moment.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so I hereby accept the nomination of trustee Wiegand for appointment to Mayor Pro Tem. Are there any other nominations from the board? This time I would like to personally nominate trustee Mason. You accept?
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor, it would be an honor and a pleasure to serve as Mayor Pro Tem for the Town of Wellington, I do accept the nomination.
Okay. I hereby accept the nomination for trustee Mason to appointment to Mayor Pro Tem. Any other nominations from the board this time? Okay. Having no further nominations, uh, we will be doing a public vote. Um, I will go around, call the names, you will state the name of the person that you would like to be Mayor Pro Tem out loud, and we will go until there is a majority vote. All right, um, trustee Cannon.
Well, as much as I hate to vote for myself, I'm gonna vote for myself, thank you.
Perfect. Trustee Daly.
Uh, Ed Cannon.
Perfect. Trustee Mason.
I suppose I would very much say the same thing as trustee, uh, trustee Cannon. Um, I, I would in fact vote, vote for myself on this.
Okay. Trustee Moyer.
Trustee Cannon.
Trustee Teets.
Trustee Wiegand.
Trustee Wiegand.
Trustee Wiegand.
And I vote for trustee Mason.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, there is not a majority.
Okay. At this point, are there any? Um. Now that the nominations have passed, are there any amendments to the nominations since none passed?
Is there a discussion that's to happen about the reason of the nomination?
We can, yeah, we can definitely discuss it. That is, that is open. Would you like to discuss that, trustee Teets?
I would love to. So, the reason why I have nominated trustee Wiegand is because he has served on our board previously, but he has been very neutral in a lot of his aspects when it comes to his votes on the board. I feel that he, with his age and experience, no offense, trustee Wiegand, um, I think he brings a level head to all of us as board members, or did with our previous board. Um, I think he communicated well with everybody. I don't, I never heard complaints of how he had communicated with all of our board members. So I, it's the reason I support him, so I would love to be able to see that neutrality. Um, kind of what, as we expect in new mayor, is someone who will listen to all sides and find a balance in the middle. And I think that really supports trustee Wiegand's nomination.
Thank you. Trustee Daly.
Uh, yes, I have a few notes. The reason why I nominated trustee Cannon, uh, for this position is, there's several actually. So first and foremost, um, when I think of, for Mayor Pro Tem, um, from a perspective of experience and knowledge, uh, from, in my opinion, uh, trustee Cannon brings, um, an extended amount of both of these items. Um, and I think that that is so very valuable in order to serve in this position and to serve as a very valuable backup to you. Uh, secondly, uh, trustee Cannon is retired. Uh, I, I, it's a weird thing to bring up, but is, should have tons of time, um, especially during the daytime that a lot of people on our board struggle with just from scheduling our, uh, other jobs, because we all other, have other jobs. I hope everybody realizes that. Um, and so for availability perspective, I think the representation for, if a mayor wasn't present during a daytime activity or for other daytime activities, we would have second in command available to serve in that capacity. Um, and I think that would be, uh, great, may take away from some golf time. Um, trustee Cannon comes with a extensive, uh, network. Um, and I, I believe that an added level of authority, a presence, um, from trustee Cannon would be very insightful for relationships with our neighboring communities, um, all across Colorado and beyond, and strategic partners, not just other municipalities. So, uh, I think that those relationships are very strong, and that is a huge asset to our town as, uh, we're approaching the future. And, uh, trustee Cannon is also very clear on and has experience with rules and procedure. Um, and I think that that is very important for this role as well, to be able to step in, um, and serve as that backup without a significant amount of training or anything like that. So those are my reasons, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'll ask one more time, are there any further amendments to nominations?
I am happy to make an amendment to my nomination. But I'd like to ask a question because I want to verify, trustee Mason, I know that you work from home during the day. Is that accurate as far as your scheduling and procedures would go as availability to the community to serve in this capacity?
Yeah, thank you for the question, trustee Teets. I, I, I do in fact work remotely, um, typically during the daytime, I am, uh, virtually always available unless I'm working an incident for, uh, the company I work for. Um, that is not a very often thing, that is a rotation, that's about, uh, typically one week out of the month, so. Um, but anytime anybody would want to get ahold of me in that regard, as far as Ms. Garcia goes, as far as any of the other trustees on the board, uh, certainly I make myself available as, as much as I possibly can, so.
Perfect. And then having trustee Cannon, I am excited to have you on, but I have not worked with you yet. So I don't know how the representation connection and items like that would go. I have had conversation with trustee Mason, I've been able to reach out to him when him and I have had to have contact with each other. He's been responsive, so I am happy to move my nomination to trustee Mason if this helps move things along this evening.
Mayor Charleston. Mind if I say a word?
I'm ready.
First of all, I have a lot of respect for Brian Mason, trustee Mason, and trustee Wiegand. Um, I think any of the three of us could do an outstanding job. Um, I do have connections as being the former town administrator in Colorado for the past seven years. Uh, I know, I know mayors in neighboring communities, I know town managers, I know the staff at C M L. Uh, I plan to be a full-time trustee, not full-time as in getting involved with staff. Uh, that's not my role or responsibility. But the role of a mayor, um, is more than just the symbolic head of the community. Uh, it's also being that representative out in the community, in the state, even in Washington, D.C. Uh, there are many things that are happening at, down in Denver that require, uh, a close attention and people who can be there. Uh, like I said, I do know most of the, uh, well, I know all of the staff at C M L, uh, who is our number one advocate. I would be proud to serve as your mayor pro tem, but be honest with you, I'm content with whatever the board decides on this. Again, I have tremendous respect for Brian Mason, trustee Mason. Um, but I do feel like that I could bring more to the table, uh, by being that person who can not only just show up at ribbon cuttings, but also could be in Denver, it could be in neighboring communities and talking with other mayors uh, to help push Wellington forward on the initiatives and to help us find, uh, partnerships where we can work together. And I've done that quite successfully when I was the town administrator here. In fact, uh, they even had the mayor of, uh, Fort Collins, uh, Mister Wade Troxel, tell me that I put Wellington on the map when I was the town administrator. So whatever the board decides, I'm happy with that, and, uh, I don't want this to be a long contentious issue on our first night as a board. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, so I'd like to amend my nomination.
Dave's trying to talk. Yes, Dave? Yes, trustee Wiegand?
I would remove myself from nomination and I would throw my support behind Mr. Mason, trustee Mason. Can I do that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll do, yes, absolutely. Okay, at this moment, we will go to a roll call. Once again, trustee Cannon.
Mr. Mayor, if you would, just want to state the current nominations.
You got it. Current nominations are trustee Cannon and trustee Mason.
Trustee Mason.
Trustee Mason.
Trustee Mason.
Trustee Mason.
Trustee Moyer.
Trustee Mason.
Trustee Wiegand. Trustee Teetz.
Trustee Mason.
Trustee Mason.
With unanimous majority, trustee Mason was selected.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. I will now close the special meeting and open the work session, time being 7:01 PM. And yeah, we'll take a 10-minute and then come back for the work session.
I'm sorry, mayor, I will watch the extension. I apologize, I'm just not feeling super well, but I wanted to make sure to welcome all of the new trustees. I won't be there for the orientation part, but I will watch the recording.
Okay.
Tomorrow. Is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely. Take care of yourself.
Perfect. Have a good night.
Thank you too. Bye.
All right, we all ready?
Yes.
Excellent. All right. Thanks, everybody. Patty Garcia, town administrator, thank you so much for your time tonight. This should not take too much time. Lowry, trustee Moyer and trustee Cannon, you have the binders that have been passed out beforehand. Includes a lot of information. I'm not going to go through all of that tonight. That is for your use. If you have any questions about it, please let me know. And if there's more information you're looking for, let me know and I will get that for you. This is an easy orientation, just to kind of, just to get you acclimated to what the role is and the responsibilities for being a trustee. So, these are the things we'll be talking about tonight. The mission and vision statement, the strategic plan, community survey, our form of government, the organization chart and boards and commissions, actions of the board of trustees, meetings and executive sessions, public records, open meetings, code of ethics, department overview, and then of course, take any of your questions at the end. So, this is the town's mission and vision statement and the strategic plan for 2022 and 2024. The board of trustees will embark on strategic planning for 2024 through 2026. Here very shortly, we are working on engaging with the company to take care of board development and strategic planning for the town this year. So, that will be an opportunity for you to review that vision and mission, those vision and mission statements. If it's something you'd like to change or update or, you know, create more, something that feels good for you, that would be the time to do that. Right now, we just finished up getting some information on our strategic planning for the upcoming year, getting some community feedback. We held an open house last month and we've had open, an opportunity to, for residents to provide comments through our website. So, that information will be forthcoming in your packet, your next packet on April 23rd. And you'll be able to hear what the residents had to say and that way, you'll have an idea of what the residents are looking for when you start talking about strategic planning and projects for the next couple of years. So, we have, this year, we started working on tracking of our strategic planning objectives and goals. There is software that does this. It's $10,000, but we did not spend the $10,000. We came up with our own way and it worked. We will look to do some things a little different for next year. One of the things we ran into this year with our tracking, if you get online and see, look at that, is so many of the things that we do are ongoing. So, there's never a completion date or it's always, you know, we'll finish it, but we know we have to do it again next year. So, we don't get to say it's actually completed, like the budget and things like that. So, when we are talking about strategic plan goals, upcoming strategic plan goals, we're going to be looking for things that are measurable, things that we can actually complete. Maybe even go, going so far as KPIs and things like that. We don't have a lot of staff time to do a lot of that, but it is something we need to start doing as we're growing and doing more projects and really starting to move forward, moving Wellington forward in a good pace. So, in the back of your binders is the National Research Center information, the survey responses. So, we taught, we asked them, what are some of those things that they, you know, the town would like to focus on? Of course, water rates, of course, economic health and restaurant shops and amenities. The top amenities requested was a pool or a rec center, big box stores or grocery stores and more restaurants. I am happy to say that residence rate Wellington is a good or excellent place to live and raise a family. That's something we know, but how can we improve that and how can we boost up those rates and those rankings over time? So, we won't do a survey this year. It'll be next year. So, it gives us, we try to do that every two years in order to give us an opportunity to grow and expand and improve on those things that maybe we ranked a little bit lower on than we would like to. One of the things that everyone has, every municipality ranks low on is snow removal, just FYI. So, you all know this, but I'm going to, we will go on ahead and talk about it, but Wellington is a statutory town and in comparison to a home rule municipality. There are a lot of home rule municipalities in the state of Colorado and it does provide you additional options as a home rule municipality to potentially opt out of certain legislation that comes before the state. It gives you an opportunity to self-collect your sales tax, which means you get to bring it in quicker and you get to invest it quicker as opposed to waiting two months for it to go to the state and then the state takes it and they distribute it back to us. So, it takes some time. It also helps us control what is happening in our town as far as being able to create ordinances and things like that, that you believe would be beneficial for the residents of Wellington. We do have a council manager form of government or a council administrator form of government. So, it is my job to, to take care of staff, to act as the CEO of the organization. I respond to you. I answer to you and you, you give me the policy and my job is to make it happen.
Good evening, mayor and trustees. I'm Stephanie Anderson. I'm the HR director. So, this slide shows the town's organizational chart. So, you'll find at the chart, at the top of the chart is our residents. It really is our job as town staff to serve our community and the residents that all live here. Pretty soon, you'll hear from each of our department heads to talk specifically about their departments, but I wanted to give an overall rundown. So, the 2024 budget contains 63.75 FTE staff members, which means full-time equivalent. And in 2023, we did have 60 FTE staff here and we did request and we're going to talk more about the 3.75 additional positions at an upcoming board meeting. The chart is broken down then by department and includes the roles along with the number of staff that are in each role. So, nearly half of our staff are within the public works department, split between utilities, streets and public works administration. And then the remainder of staff are split between the town clerk's office, finance, planning and building, parks and recreation, the library, along with administration. If you have any questions around the org chart, you can always reach out to me.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees, Ethan Moose, your town clerk. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I'm going to present to you on the boards and commissions that the town appoints as well as the advisory board commission appointment process. I'll be giving you a general overview for your awareness. I believe I've discussed this with most of you previously. There are just a couple of highlights that I'd like to make here. First, it's important to note that there's a distinction between statutory and advisory boards and commissions. The statutory boards that the board of trustees appoints are the board of adjustments and the planning commission. Those are regulated by municipal statutes and have specific legal requirements. Other boards are advisory, that fall into the advisory category. For example, the prost board where the finance committee provide advisory functions to the board of trustees. And then further boards, excuse me, further commissions, for example, the liquor license authority perform specific quasi judicial actions on behalf of the town. In the case of the liquor license authority, that is the board of trustees and as you've probably, those that have previous experience with the board, either just by serving on it or observing, will know that the board of trustees does make decisions about liquor license applications. Moving on to the advisory board and commission appointment process, the way that an individual member of the public would go about being recommended for appointment is to apply. First, the first step is to apply online. There's a portal on the website. For those that are not able to do that, I'm certainly happy to address points to points with folks that send me an email. But then after that occurs, there is an interview process where the member, sitting members of the board will meet with the prospective candidates to discuss their qualifications, candidacy and interest. And then at that point, a recommendation is made by the convening members of the board for that interview as to whether or not to appoint the person. The official action taken by the board does not occur during those interviews, but rather during the meetings. And those are usually brought to the board of trustees by resolution. I'm happy to take any questions that you all might have for me about the statutory advisory or commissions that the board appoints or any of the advisory board commission appointment processes.
No questions.
Thank you.
All right, you'll see that we have an amazing team here. Everybody, everybody, every person that works for the town of Wellington has a true passion for Wellington and wants to see Wellington succeed. And some, this is evident in this role of the elected officials and the role of staff. I like the way this is laid out, talking about what the role of the politics is. So, the first item talks about what the activity is and, and that is really the policy and the values that the board has. And then our job is, as, as, as staff is, we're to problem solve those items. What are those items that are, that you're passionate about? What are the things that you're wanting to get done? And we come up with, with how that happens. It talks about the players. The players are the representatives or the trustees and the community members. And the administration are the experts. We have people here who, who have been in this business for many, many years and know their stuff. They're smart, smart people, well-educated and they know, they know how to get problems solved. They just need to be given the opportunity to do so. The conversation, you out in the, out, out talking to people, what did you hear? What is the passion that you're hearing? What are the dreams that you're hearing from your residents? What are the stories? What are the stories you can tell? And then our job is to figure out what is the data related to that? What are the plans and what sort of reports would help support those stories or those ideas and dreams? The different pieces that we talk about, those intangible items as far as what is, what are someone's interests? And what are those symbols? What do we, what do we want to create and make Wellington? And, and then staff's job is to talk about that information sharing. What's it going to cost? What people do we need to get on board to make this happen? And what equipment do we need? Do we need another front loader or something like that, you know? So, it's, it's, it's always working those pieces and always being in constant communication. Currency we talk about, and I'm not talking about money when I'm talking about currency, but I'm talking about loyalty and trust and loyalty and trust with the, with the elected officials. And then us, as staff coming across with our knowledge and our, the deeds that we can present to help support that trust and that loyalty that comes forward. The last item is talking about the dynamics and, and knowing that we're, there will be constructive conflict amongst you. I should hope so. That makes it healthy, being able to talk through problems and talk through issues and, and agreeing to disagree at some point in time, but coming to a resolution. That's compromising. It's, it's change management. And then from staff, that brings us to be cooperative, to provide continuity for those, for whatever discussions are happening. How can we help get you to that next place? And predictability, knowing that we will be here all the time, every time and helping to, helping to guide you to that next step. So, governance, the mayor is elected at large. He has two more years left on his, on his term. He presides overall board of trustee meetings. He controls the agenda. He can vote and can call a special meeting. I say he can vote because there are some municipalities where the mayor can't vote and only votes if it's a tie. So, that's, that's always interesting. I haven't had to work for a municipality like that. But this is, I like the way it works here. The mayor pro tem has been elected or appointed after the first meeting of the board of trustees. You perform the duties of the mayor if he is absent. So, thank you, trustee Mason, for stepping up for that. Appointed officers, which you will see included on your agenda for the next meeting. Appointment of officers is town administrator, town clerk, town attorney, town treasurer and the municipal judge.
Steve's, Dan Sabian's the town attorney. I've got a number of slides to go over here with you, but I know all of you are big fans of watching town board meetings. So, mostly when I go over procedure, you'll be familiar with all of this. There are a lot of rules, so always feel free to reach out to me at any time to discuss points of order or anything else you want to talk about. General procedures of the meeting, there's an agenda that's sent out. There's a call to order, amendments to the agenda. This board doesn't usually require a vote for amendments on the agenda. Usually they're agreed to by consent. You have to disclose any conflicts of interest for board or agenda items. Then we have community participation. This is for non-agenda items, public comment on non-agenda items. Presentations, these are usually items that don't, or these are all items that don't require action. So, it might be an outside party comes in. We like to have that presentation at the beginning of the meeting so that they can come and then leave and not have to stick around for the full meeting or other items. But these are no action required from the board. Consent agenda are generally accepted items. I mean, items that are non-controversial. And so, you vote on all of those items as one. For each individual action item, the order that has been accepted by the board in the past has been, start with a discussion. Usually it's presentation by a staff member, questions from the board, you move on to public comment. Then there's deliberation from the board followed by a motion. Sometimes the board adjourns into the liquor license authority. And it's a whole, it is comprised of the same members of this board, but it is a separate board. So, you have to adjourn this meeting, open the liquor license authority, adjourn that meeting, come back into this one. Sometimes those are moved up to the beginning of the meeting, again, like presentations, because it involves a number of outside parties coming to those, sometimes just for convenience, so the parties participating, they'll have those at the beginning. We'll talk a little bit about executive sessions. There's a number, and we'll talk a little bit about this in a minute. Executive sessions usually, traditionally with this board, have been at the end of meetings. They do require emptying this entire room and often there's a lot of people here. So, usually we try and schedule, if we know an executive session is needed, we try and schedule those in advance. We'll put them on the agenda and we'll put them at the very end. So, that way, all of the action items can be completed and then we'll close them, close the room, everybody leaves and that way, they don't have to come back in for a number of items. Sometimes though, executive sessions could be needed in the middle of a meeting. For instance, for issues where we might need attorney, attorney advice on particular items. So, that's always, it's always a vote of the board to enter into an executive session. You have to state the reason for it. The board votes and if that's accepted, then we'll have to do that at that time. I, again, usually try and keep those toward the end, but there could be instances where they have to be in the middle of a meeting. This board per town code follows Robert's Rules, which is a very large arcane book that's intended for all sorts of different organizations. It's not ideal for small government. It's not ideal for small boards like this often. And so, the board by resolution has adopted Bob's Rules. Bob's Rules is a collection of, a collection of somewhat simplified, but also modified rules. But they're more tailored to municipal government. It's published by the Colorado Municipal League. In the past, and what this board has adopted is a called a draft document. I think they, over the years, they sort of, it evolves a little bit. And just last year, the Colorado Municipal And just last year, the Colorado Municipal League finally actually published a hard copy of the most recent version of Bob's Rules. I think it is a very good collection of rules, and that's something that this Board will be talking about in the future, perhaps, to adopt that newest version to replace the use of Robert's Rules. Generally, to speak, you must have the floor, there are general points of order, motions, you have to make a motion to accept an item, and make amendments to motions. We'll give you a rundown on how all that works if you, if you want to. If you also, like I said, if you have questions, let me know. For the Board of Trustees to take action, the main ways that happens is through ordinances. Ordinances are used to enact laws of general and permanent nature. This slide and a lot of books say that they're all codified in Wellington Municipal Code, and that's not actually exactly true. Just earlier this year, the Board adopted an ordinance to approve a franchise agreement with Comcast that is required by law to be an ordinance, but it isn't included in our Town Code. So ordinances, though, are intended to be permanent. Resolutions are less formal than ordinances, they're not generally published, they often address one-time issues. That's often how this Board will create policy that impacts, impacts how the town operates. And so sometimes there'll be resolutions, recently there was one on watering restrictions. And that's by resolution, the Town Board gives Town Staff direction on how to implement one of the laws of the town. So resolutions are a little different. We also use resolutions for almost all contracts, just to have a formal documentation that the contract was approved. Motions are used to provide clear direction to Town Staff, and the Board sometimes, you can adopt a resolution or an ordinance by motion with some additional instructions. Sometimes that's happened, so, but we often will give you recommendations for motions in the packet. Proclamations are ceremonial, they're done at the beginning of meetings, it's not really affect policy necessarily, other than the intent of the Board or the desires of the Board to commemorate something. Sometimes, but not regularly, this Board has to sit as a quasi-judicial body. There are other Boards that do this more often. The Board of Adjustment, which is appointed by this Board, everything that it does is quasi-judicial in nature. It hears variance requests, it hears appeals of certain decisions. The Planning Commission also often has quasi-judicial decision-making. This Board, it's a little more, it's a little more rare. What quasi-judicial decisions are, they are determinations of an individual's rights, duties, or obligations, and they affect a specific property, they might expect, affect a specific individual. Those decisions, you're the judge. You sit here as a judge, you take off your legislative hat and you put on your judge hat. And your obligation is to provide a fair hearing that provides due par process. Part of that is that you need to make your decision based on the record that's in front of you. So you need to be impartial, you need to listen to evidence, the testimony of people that are here, and you also need to, there's another slide on this, there is none, need to avoid ex parte communications. So one of the things that many Board members do when they receive their packet is they read that packet and they go, I want to learn more about this topic. And you go out and you learn lots of information, and that's wonderful when you're doing legislative actions. But under a, when you're sitting as a quasi-judicial body, going outside and doing that extra research means that you're receiving information that affects somebody's rights, that they have no idea where you received it, what that information is, and they have no way to refute it. So if you make your decision based on that outside information, then that, that could violate their rights. When we have a quasi-judicial process before this Board, certainly before the first time that you sit in that role, we'll get you more information. Probably the most common one is where we do liquor license hearings. Colorado has the Open Meetings Law, and this means that all meetings of government body, Board Committee, at which public business will be discussed, must be open to the public and held only after full and timely public notice. You can't make policy in secret. And that's why at the beginning of this meeting, when we were talking about appointing a mayor pro temp, I said this is the one time that the statutes of Colorado allow you to make a secret decision, and that is appointing the leadership of the Board. Everything else that this Board does needs to be out in the open. And that's where we have these public meetings, and the only exception to that, again, is where we have executive sessions, but you can't make decisions in executive sessions. Executive sessions are for some discussions, they're for particular items, and they're limited to a very narrow scope of what, what the reason that you enter into that executive session, but you can't actually make decisions. Discussions happens before action is taken before this Board, it needs to come back out into the open. So executive sessions are not an exception to the Open Meetings Law, they're just a, used in rare occasions. And we really try and refrain as much as possible from having executive sessions, but sometimes we have to. Full and public notice, full and timely public notice, means that the agendas for this Board need to be posted at least 24 hours in advance. It is the practice of the Town to try and get packets to the Board the week before. The agenda is really set, I think, on Wednesday or Thursday of the week prior, and the packets usually go out on Friday. There sometimes are amendments to those packets and agendas, again, try and do that as rarely as possible, but action cannot be taken by this Board unless notice is given to the public at least 24 hours in advance. Reason for that is that the public knows what you're doing, and has the ability to come and speak on that issue. And that law applies anytime there are more, there are three or more members of the Board where public business is discussed. So anytime there are three of you get together and want to talk about the policies of the Town, we could be running up against Open Meetings rules. So please be careful of that. But it doesn't apply to social gathering. So if there are three of you together somewhere, keep it social. We will talk a lot more about that. Sursa, Sam Light from Sursa, General Counsel for our insurance company, will be talking more next week. Special meetings, the mayor or a majority of the Board of Trustees can call a special meeting. Special meetings are reserved for a limited purpose, usually. We don't just have a special meeting where it's the usual course of business. Usually it's a special meeting for one thing, or two things. I don't know the last time we had a special meeting, other than the one tonight. Slide, thought I did. Opens Meetings Rules also applies to any kind of gathering, and so it's not just when trustees are together in a room, but it can include where you're talking by telephone, electronically, or by other means of communication, about the most vague and broad statutes you could ever imagine. So anytime you're on an email chain with all the other trustees, that could be an opens meeting, or that could be subject to the opens meeting, Open Meetings Law. So if you are on an email chain, don't discuss public business. There are exceptions to the rule for, again, social gatherings or discussing scheduling. And so sometimes when the Board goes off to Colorado Municipal League Conferences or other events like that, there's sometimes a text message chain, but it's all about just scheduling. Keep it to that, we'll be safe. There are some other exceptions to the rule, but just the general rule, don't talk about business on email. And what isn't said on this slide is, even though an email might not be subject to the Open Meetings Law, it is subject to the Colorado Open Records Rules, the Colorado Open Records Act, CORA. So your emails, even if it's not three or more of you, you're pretty much, your emails, all of your emails to your official email account can be released and will be released to the public if requested. So just be aware of that when you're using your official email. We'll go through the entire slide, because we're going to talk a lot more about all these rules in the future. The Code of Ethics in the Town of Wellington is in Chapter Two, Article Six of the Wellington Town Code. This applies to all conduct of elected officials, appointed officials, and all employees. You must carry out your duties for the benefit of the people you serve and avoid conduct that violates or appears to violate public trust. If you ever have a question, I'm always happy to talk about it. I would rather discuss an issue, discuss a question around a conflict of interest or a Code of Ethics issue in advance, rather than be surprised about it at a meeting. Better for all of us. That's what I have, I'm always available to talk. Thank you.
All right, getting close. So this one talks a little, this slide talks a little bit about what Mr. Sapienza just mentioned about the Town emails and understanding that they can be, you know, that they are subject to open records. You all have a laptop, and please use it as needed. If you have any problems or any issues with it, please let us know, and we'll get that handled for you. Just talking a little bit about outside organizations that we're part of. We have, or of course participate with Colorado Municipal League, and there's others listed there. These are ones that, some of these are outside organizations that trustees sit or are advisory to. Others are just for Town Staff to participate, such as the, see, North Front Range Regional Wayshed Coalition, Trustee Daly sits on that, Behavioral Health Policy Council, the opioid, the Lemer County Regional Opioid Council as well, we have members on that. We will have more information about that at your next meeting, talking about when, where you want to be and what Boards or commissions or items like that that you want to serve as a liaison to. So now we're going to quickly go through the various departments, and each, each of them will walk all the way from the back to the front when it's time for them to come up. But the first one we'll talk about is the Administration Department, that is me. And Kelly Hodling is the Deputy Town Administrator. Kelly and I have worked together for quite a long time and really appreciate her support. So, as I mentioned before, it's a Council Manager, form of government. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of the Town and responsible for the overall management of Town operations. So I talk, I take care of implementing your policy decisions, legislative actions taken by the Board. I'll make recommendations to the Board of Trustees as far as what I think needs to happen related to maybe a policy decision or a request or a project. I oversee the day-to-day operations of the Town, and I prepare the Town Budget. That's listed in our code.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees, Kelly Hodling, Deputy Town Administrator. So as Patty mentioned, the Administration Team, we're responsible for a variety of different areas. So Human Resources is within our group, and the goal there is to attract and retain high-skilled workforce. We also oversee the Town's Property and Casualty Insurance, which is called Sursa, and you'll probably learn more about that if you go to the CML Conference. Also, IT is within that group as well. We oversee Communications Division. Jerry here, in the back of the room, is on our team, and he oversees the external communications and marketing efforts of the Town. We also are responsible for the Community and Business Relations position, and we have that hybrid relationship with the Main Street Group. And so there's a lot of business support, community event planning on the Town side and on the Main Street Group. And then this team is also leads the Grant Management Effort, which is about, in the last probably four years, the Town has gotten about $7.3 million in grant funding from a variety of sources for our community. And then the Water Efficiency Program. There's a whole lot more, but in the interest of time, if you have any other questions, feel free to reach out to me. Thanks.
Hello again, Mr. Mayor, Board, Ethan Moose, Town Clerk. It is a pleasure to be one of the appointed officers that the Board establishes for the Town. I do appreciate your trust and confidence, and we'll move forward with that. The Town Clerk is responsible for a lot of things. You can see several of them listed here. One of the ways that I like to describe sort of, one of the roles of the Town Clerk is I take statutory requirements and laws and turn them into processes. As an example, the election being one of those. I take what the law says that we're supposed to do with the elections, and I make that reality in terms of process here in Wellington. I also am responsible for agenda and packet preparation, maintaining the minutes and records for the Town, responsibility for elections, certifying the legality of the laws and ordinances and resolutions that are enacted by the Town, and then providing additional supervision oversight to the Cemetery, Liquor License Authority, Marijuana License Authority, Boards and Commissions Appointment Processes, and Municipal Court. Again, thank you for your trust and confidence.
I left my notes up here, sorry. So Finance Department is moving forward, so excited. Nick Rudeved starts on next Monday, not this next Mon, the 29th, he starts on the 29th. Really excited to have him start. Mr. Rhodes, Mr. Don Rhodes, who's with Baker Tilly, who's been our interim for, since about August of last year, will be staying on and coming in and being in person, working with him for the month of May. And then through the summertime, he will be available to answer questions as, on an as-needed basis, and then we'll be back in the fall to help guide the budgeting process. So really excited to get this thing rolling. You, you will, you know, I don't know if you know or not, that our 2021 audit has been completed with a clean opinion, which is huge, and Hinkle and Company is our auditors now, working on the '22 and '23 audits, and they are already working on that, and, and we're submitting the information and moving forward like we're supposed to. Accounting functions, including, includes accounts payable, accounts receivable, taking care of the audits, budget preparation, the financial reporting, which is now happening on a regular basis, and it's actually being posted on our website as well. We, Finance also oversees the purchasing policy, payroll, and utility billing. So it's a big job, and we are, we've got a great team working on it. And now we'll turn it over to Public Work.
Good evening, Mayor and Trustees, I'm Megan Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works. I have very large shoes to fill, as I'm afraid Director Gowing is homesick this evening as it's been going around. So in the Public Works Department, we oversee, as I think Ms. Anderson earlier might have mentioned, their org chart breakout, there's about half of the organization resides in the Public Works Department. Between, we oversee the water, wastewater, also including in that the collection and distribution system, so all the pipes going through Town, storm drainage, our streets and fleet, as well as our engineering group. So we are charged with kind of operating and maintaining all of those facilities in Town, including other actual facilities, such as the Leaper Center, the Municipal Services Building, changing light bulbs, hanging pictures, the whole nine yards, toilets, whatever. We also manage in the Public Works Department our capital improvement program. That includes our, our long-term master planning projects, design and construction, of which you're aware, we have a couple of extremely large projects that I do want to tout, we're really closing in on the final stretch for the water treatment facility, looking at substantial completion at the end of next month, our first week in June as it rolls over that month, so it's a very exciting time. We also do, provide engineering review for all of our development through Town, so that includes both streets, drainage, floodplain, as well as utilities engineering review. We also are responsible for creating and enforcing the Town's engineering standards and construction standards, as well as performing construction inspection for all of our public infrastructure that goes in place. And then on top of that, we have a, a large hand in overseeing the water, wastewater, and storm drainage enterprise funds. That includes reserve funds for impact fees, also our raw water fund. So we have a pretty heavy fiscal responsibility in our group as well. So we really are here to support the Town, making sure everything is safe, operational, and consistent as best we can every day. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Good evening, Mayor and Board, I'm Cody Byrd, Planning Director. I oversee the Planning Department. We usually refer to it as Planning Department, but it's also the Planning and Building Department, and we also have Neighborhood Services in our group as well, our Code Enforcement Officer, Neighborhood Services Officer. Our Planning Department oversees a pretty diverse type of projects. We are primarily responsible for the growth and development of the community, and we do that by creating a vision for the community, the comprehensive plan the Planning Commission adopts. There's an official policy of the Town, it's a 20- to 40-year vision for where the community sees itself. Following our comprehensive plan vision, we tailor and adopt zoning regulations, subdivision regulations, and other land use, land use development ordinances. That, those are the rules that affect the vision to implement what we want to do for our community. We make amendments to those plans as needed over time. We update our land development codes and processes, and we administer the Planning and Development Review Processes. As Megan mentioned, for our engineering review, Planning Department also reviews all those applications and administers that process for annexations, master plans, subdivision plots, down to site plan reviews. The Planning Commission conducts quasi-judicial proceedings for zoning and rezoning and conditional uses. The process that Mr. Sapienza described, Planning Commission's heavily involved in that. Planning Staff is the liaison to the Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustments for both of those functions, for their meeting procedures. The Building Department is part of our, our function. We oversee the administration of permits. We also have a contract for third-party review and inspection via Safe Built that we manage. We also have a contract for third-party review and inspection via safe built that we manage, and building and life safety is a big part of that piece, making sure that our public facilities, our businesses, our homes are safe when people go into them, when they buy a new home, that they know that they're buying a quality product that has met all the safety requirements of the town. And last but certainly not least, our Neighborhood Services Officer. We have one Neighborhood Services Officer that oversees the whole town and has a very broad function to try and keep our community attractive, safe, free of public nuisances, a very thankless job, but we're very fortunate to have a really qualified individual in that capacity. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding the Planning Department functions at any other time. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board. Congratulations, new trustees, welcome. It's fantastic that you're here. I'm going to be, I think I'm going to be covering the law enforcement aspects of the presentation tonight. This is really limited. Ms. Garcia and I are going to try to plan on something more comprehensive for the entire board at the Sheriff's Office, so you can, we can show off all the cool people, we have tools and, and training. But your contracts between the Lemer County and the Town of Wellington covers the Sergeant, myself, my Corporal, an Investigator, I'll hit that for just, in just a second, and then we have eight deputies that provide 24-hour coverage for the town. As of 2023, we actually bumped it up to 24-hour coverage, so we have a day shift, a swing shift, and a midnight shift. God bless the midnight shift because they're up in the wee hours of the morning when, when we're all asleep. That Investigator position is kind of confused, can be confusing because that one Investigator position actually encompasses the entire Investigations Division, 13 investigators. It doesn't, that doesn't include our Criminal Impact Unit. If we get a call that requires an Investigator, we'll probably get two or three, four, if not all of them at one time. Deputy Piper is also our Desk Officer, thanks to the town. We are occupying the old Wellington Town Hall, that is our, our substation, if you would. Deputy Piper does all kinds of services, from VIN inspections to walk-in reports. He takes phone reports, he does all kinds of different things for us, so he's a huge help. He is there Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We also have Deputy Nancy Remington. She is our School Resource Officer. She works mostly out of the Wellington Middle High School. However, if there are any calls at any of the elementary schools, she also responds to, to those schools as well to do some of the problem solving there. Obviously, we're, we're in a town, we try to establish good community-oriented policing. If there's a town event, we're probably going to be there from the Fourth of July to the egg hunts, to any of the parades that are taking place. We were just involved in the Equinox 5K and Half Marathon, providing bike patrols and, and all those types of things. We attend bimonthly assault meetings, so seniors and law enforcement together so that we can meet with our seniors and give them updates on what we're doing with the town. We try to be as, as involved as we possibly can. We don't have any Coffee with a Cop events scheduled so far, but last year we had Coffee, Coffee with a Cop and Cars, Coffee with a Cop, Cars and Kids. So we had all, we, we're trying to be, trying to experimenting, experimenting to see how we can impact the community best. Obviously, we do a lot of traffic enforcement, criminal enforcement, we do limited animal control duties. I'm sure you'll find out about that later. We do enforce the municipal ordinances here in town, county, county laws, state laws, and if we are deputized by a federal agency, we can enforce federal laws, but that's, that's not our bread and butter. We are supported by a lot of specialty units. This slide is really limited on the, all the different units that do support us. We're very blessed to have mental health responders that respond up here routinely to assist us with any mental health calls. Our victims' advocates are always available to help out with our victims' crime lab and forensics. They are fantastic. They, they respond at 24/7, and then our reserve deputies and cadets, you'll see them at every single event that happens in town, from bike patrol to just walking around and interacting with the citizens. Thank you very much.
I'm back up here. My name's Dan Sapienza, Pooter Legal Advisors and Town Attorney. My office, or I serve as legal advisor and attorney to the Town and Board of Trustees. My job is to give you advice on doing your jobs and to help the Town of Wellington. I'm happy to provide opinions on just about anything you want. Contact me, use me as a resource as needed. In meetings, I usually will sit quietly, and I feel like if I can say nothing in a meeting, that's, means the meeting's going well. If I have to talk about something, usually that's maybe not ideal. So ask me for advice in advance. I'm happy to talk about what you're, what you're going to talk about in a meeting. Let's talk it through. I also advise other officers and departments within the Town of Wellington. So I spend a lot of my time working with all of our departments, advising them on doing their jobs in compliance with state, federal, local laws. Prosecute ordinance violations. Municipal Court is actually under the Town Clerk's office, or it's also under the Municipal Judge, kind of operations are here and there. I work a lot with our Municipal Court Clerk and with that Municipal Court to make sure that that's running well, but my primary job with Municipal Court is to serve as prosecutor. I prosecute municipal violations, which would be traffic incidents or violations in the Town Code. Repair and review all ordinances, contracts, pretty much if it's in your packet and if it's coming to you, I have to look at it and review it, approve it, make edits to it, and if you ever, you know, and when needed, I provide my opinion on it. Call the attention of the Board of Trustees, all matters of law and changes. There's a lot of laws coming through, and as all of you know, we're not a home rule municipality, so the folks down in Denver love to pass laws that change how the Town of Wellington, a statutory municipality, runs. So there's a lot to keep track of. So I try and make sure that every year those are incorporated into what we're doing, and try and bring those to your attention. I prefer, perform such other duties as may be prescribed. So let me know what you need. I'm here to support the Board of Trustees, I'm here to support the town, and then everything I do. So I'm always open to talk.
First of all, congratulations. I'm Ross Lajinez, I am the Director at the Public Library. Oh, am I supposed to do this? Okay. So what we have is our mission. The mission at the Wellington Public Library, in cooperation with the Town of Wellington, honors our history with focused intent on the future. Our mission is to serve and reflect every member of our community in an enlightened, democratic, and unified approach. Our guiding ideals, our community, connection, curiosity, we actually use it for everything. We use it for budget, we use it for purchases. Does this adhere to our mission? We also, our, our vision is important to us. The vision of the Public Library as of three years ago is to abide by the vision to promote curiosity, knowledge, and exploration through access to a myriad of global and innovative media applications and programs that foster a safe and inclusionary place to share and connect with our community, which is very important to us. Any questions? Oh, sorry. Everybody knows me, that's why I do.
Mayor and Board, have me. Billy Cooksey, Manager of the Parks and Rec Department. So functionally, I think it's pretty easy to understand what Parks and Rec does. We take care of 80-plus acres of amenities, open space. You can kind of think of this as everything that's irrigated generally in the town is taken care of on the park side. On the recreation side, we provide opportunities through sports, through activities, through events. We coordinate with multiple other departments with the town and other stakeholders to provide events throughout the town year-round. We also really try to impact the community in a more global way, so why we do it is really important to our department, to our department. So I'd like to read our mission and vision statements. Our mission is to enrich the lives of our community by providing exceptional experiences, and our vision is to enhance the town by promoting healthy lifestyles and providing accessible programs and amenities for a growing community. And I think the most important thing in there is accessible amenities and for a growing community. We really try to look forward, you know, we are going to expand, we are going to grow, and we try to provide that. No two people recreate the same, so we take care of everybody in our community and try to provide equally. Any questions? Thank you all.
All right. So first, I want to thank my team for being here tonight. They, they, I appreciate them being here and presenting on, on your behalf. We are ready and willing to work on your behalf, what your dreams, visions, goals are for the Town of Wellington, we are ready to implement and, and help guide in every step of the way. Congratulations to all of you, really excited to be working with you all, and I stand for any questions.
Trustee Cannon. Thank you, Administrator Garcia. First of all, I want to applaud staff. You mentioned in your introduction that these are very educated, very professional, very dedicated people, and I agree with that completely. I talk to a lot of people who say that they remember when Wellington was just a bunch of, you know, farms and cows and corn. What people don't really understand was seven years ago, Wellington had 19 employees, 19 employees. The Town Administrator was doing all the planning and development. It was hard to get anything done, and I am so proud of the level of professionalism that is, that has come to Wellington by staff in the past seven years. So thank you so much for this presentation, this was wonderful. You do have a good team, and I'm very proud that you're here to, to help us execute policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to express similar sentiments that our staff is fantastic here and I have the opportunity, you know, to get to know a lot of people. So, I mean, we have award-winning staff, that's, that's working, and I'm really excited to do everything that we can on the policy side to empower all of these skills and connections that we have within our staff to make the most impact, and I think that's fantastic. So I wanted again to applaud our staff and make sure that I just support you and trust you. So thank you so much for coming tonight.
I, I don't have any questions, but I do want to thank obviously our new trustees and returning trustees, very exciting, and obviously staff, appreciate you guys putting on the orientation tonight, Ethan, and especially for conducting the 2024 election, great job. So you guys are awesome, and I, I'm really looking forward to hitting the ground running.
Yes, I just want to say thank you, Patty. Thank you to the entire staff. I really look forward to getting to know you better and hearing what you're passionate about. Why are you in this role? What is it you want to see happen? I can't wait to get to know you in that way and lean into you as the subject matter experts. I'm very excited, know that you have my trust and admiration, and I'm very excited to work with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, each and every one of you for being here and all the hard work. Thank you, Ms. Garcia, Mr. Moose with the election. Couldn't have gone off better. A lot of hard work went into that, I appreciate that. Sheriffs, you guys, thank you for keeping us safe. I don't think I'm forgetting anybody. Mr. Sapienza, always great for questions, always great for opinions. Use him to the best of your abilities when you need to make things go smooth in the meetings. And I'd like to congratulate all three of you, and really looking forward to doing some great things for the town and serving our residents well and doing so with staff, and trust every single one of you guys, so thank you all.
Okay. I think that's it. I will now close the work session and reopen the special meeting, time being 8:04 p.m. Having no further business, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
I second.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Teetz? Trustee Wiegand? Mayor Protem Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.